State and City Council meeting in order? Please join me in the flag salute.
October 6th.
October 6th, did I say something else?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Is there any additions to the agenda, Julia?
No.
Council, any additions to the agenda? Does it sound like it? Any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, etc.? Don't hear any. Public comment? We do have a public comment solicitation. And before I do that, I gotta read the public comment opening statement. The council will now receive a public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the council. The council's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If there's a follow-up necessary, we will direct city staff to do so. Remember that we all model the way for our community, and then we ask that everyone share their thoughts respectfully. Those who have completed their request for recognition form will be called one at a time to step forward and state their name and city of residence. Please note that speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. And on the next up is Lynn Hayes. Mr. Hayes?
Lynn Hayes, Stateon. Hello, all. This is not just for you guys, but it's mainly for Public Works and Streets, if they're listening behind me. The area between West Town Drive and Wilco Road on Locust Street. About halfway down, right in the middle of the road, there is a sinkhole. It is not a pothole, it is a sinkhole. And every time my wife is driving, and we are going down towards Wilco Road, she hits it every time and reminds me it's there. Go ahead, laugh. I laugh every time she hits the darn thing. So, anyway, I've learned how to swerve around it, or whatever, but no, she never deviates. She hits it dead-on. So, I'm just saying, it always, it's always surprising when it happens, and she asks the same question every time. "What was that?" I said, "That's that sinkhole I keep telling you to go around." But, it is a little hard to see, because it isn't like an absolute pothole. It's just a little good dip where you go, "Ow." So, just want to mention it's there. If someone can just maybe fill it up a little bit, is all. Other than that, y'all have a nice one tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Hayes. That leads us to the consent agenda from September 15th. City Council regular session minutes. What would council like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Orte?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda from September 15th as submitted. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. There are no presentations tonight, and there is no public hearing, which leads us to general business. We good?
Yes. Alyssa, could you close the blinds behind us? Sorry. Thanks. Um, yes, do you?
Okay, I'll read the headline. General business, which is Resolution Number 25-029, Approval of the State and Sublimity Joint Sewer Water, Sewer Systems Operations Agreement. Julia?
Yes, thank you. And this resolution and agreement is actually, has come back to you. If you recall, a few meetings ago, this was brought forward, and Mayor Taylor from Sublimity was here. The request was to have discussion about the agreement, and identify any questions or concerns you might have, but not adopt it, because Sublimity City Council hadn't seen it yet. They have seen it, and they didn't have any concerns, and they actually adopted it at their last meeting, and so this is coming back to you for hopefully adoption.
Okay, thank you. There's an opportunity for a public comment on this agenda item. Doesn't look like we have any. Council discussion? Does council had a chance to review it? Okay. What would council like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Orte?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-029 as presented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 25-029, Approval of the State and Sublimity Joint Sewer Systems Operation Agreement. Is there any further discussion? Alyssa, can you pull the council on this one?
Sure.
Counselor Orte?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. That was the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution Number 25-032. Council Vision and Values with the staff report. Julia?
Thank you. This also has been presented to you on several occasions, as a reminder for you, as well as anybody who's watching in the audience or at home. When we did our goal-setting, there was a recognition that having a value statement and vision statement would be beneficial. The council didn't, at the time, determine that it was desired to do a full city vision and values effort, but did like the idea of having a simple council vision and values. The consultant with SSW drafted something, and then we presented it to council for you to review and comment on. There were several opportunities to provide some comments, and then on September 2nd, we discussed the proposed changes, and council gave direction to staff to bring this forward. The changes included replacing the consultant's draft's vision statement with the Counselor Sims' proposed version, and then we also added a transparency clause as one of the core values. And so, if you adopt this resolution, it will basically solidify for this council what your vision and core values are. That provides direction both for you as well as staff.
Okay, thank you. An opportunity for a public comment on Resolution Number 25-032. Don't see any council discussion with a decision.
I think it looks good. It's what we had asked for, so I'm good to go forward with it.
Okay. Would someone like to offer a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-032 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 25-032. Council Vision and Values as presented. Any further discussion? Alyssa, can you pull the council again, please?
Sure. Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Orte?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. That moves us on to the next item, is Resolution Number 25-033, Updating the Rules of the State and City Council. Julia?
Thank you. This is yet another agenda item that council has discussed on several occasions, and what is before you is essentially what you have discussed, I hope, unless you have any concerns or questions. This is adopting the council rules. This started with the discussion of potentially changing the time of the meetings, and in order to do that, we did a, staff did a audit of the council rules, to see where tweaks might be necessary, both to address that, as well as some areas that maybe we weren't fully following, you know, as staff or council. And so, at the, again, I think that was the September 2nd meeting, council went through the potential changes and discussed them, and provided direction to staff, and what is in front of you reflects those. Right behind the council staff report is the tracked changes version, so you can see specifically where the changes were made. A strike-through is deletions, and underline is additions, and then you have a resolution adopting the council goals, and then a clean version. So, that's what will be put out there for the public to see. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have any additional changes, happy to hear that.
Okay, thank you. This is another opportunity for public comment on Resolution Number 25-033. Looks like we might have a public comment.
Lynn Hayes, Stateon. The last time this came up, what, a couple meetings ago or so, I saw confusion. I saw frustration. And the biggest thing that probably went through my head, honestly, is Counselor Orte and Counselor Patty. And the reason I bring you two up, the first thought I had, where the time is, and how they were set, at least as they are right now, my first thought is, wow, doesn't anybody want to have some time with the kids before coming to the meeting, you know? I thought of things like that. Seriously, I did. And I thought, well, 6 o'clock, you're already having dinner early, or trying to do things like that when you have a work session. And I thought 7 o'clock was, well, about right, because you gave you an hour. So, I really didn't see where the extra half-hours were needed, or unless it was something really, really special. Like, if you got a special email and said, "Hey, we need an extra half-hour," then that could be. I just didn't see a reason, this is just me personally, I didn't see a reason where any time needed to be changed. Okay, work session's 6:00, city councils are at 7:00. I just didn't see the need for it. It seemed a little, you know, and then again, like I said, I thought of you two, because I know you have kids at home and family, so we're, you know, the rest of us are kind of retired, or semi-whatever, and I just, I thought of that. So, just wanted to say, that's how I feel about it. What you guys decide is still up to you, but I wanted to make that clear. I didn't get a chance to say that last time.
Thanks, Lynn. I think that's a valid point. Council? Any discussion? Counselor Sims, go ahead.
Well, I want to thank Julia for moving us along on this. Seems like we stagnated with this. Seems like this has been rolling around for quite some time, and appreciate the hard work on doing this. As far as the time, I don't, I don't, either way, 6:30 or 7:00 for me is fine. So, I'm just more concerned about, you know, folks with young kids and that sort of thing, so I'll, I'm open to any, any time changes, so I'm good with everything on it. I read through it, and I thought it looked just fine, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the correct, the changes, Julia, that we talked about last time, for the mayor piece. And just to confirm, so going forward, this contains clarification on what we, as a body, and what the, what the Budget Committee, for example, that one piece where we need to talk about, call for the motion, correct? So, when we, if that happens in the future, and the body calls for the motion, calls for the question, sorry, then we still have to have a vote to make sure that everyone in the room agrees that we should be calling for the question?
Correct.
Okay.
And that didn't change in here? That was what was stated in here, and that is proper parliamentary procedures, we just weren't following it, so.
Yep. I just want to clarify that, because I know that's happened over the years.
Yeah.
What would council like to do here? Further discussion?
I have just a clarifying question.
Sure.
On, okay, so Chapter 8, that talks about ethics and quorum, outside statements and whatnot. Oh, I lost my page.
Page 20 and 24.
Is it the 43 of the edits version?
No.
Up top. Okay. So, on 43, like E2 says, or E says, "City council members will refrain from posting comments that," and number 2 says, "express an opinion in a manner contrary to Chapter 8." Number 3. I just want to clear, I just want to make sure that that clarifies that you can, in fact, make comments that disagree with council decisions. You just have to make it clear that you, it's a personal statement that you're making. Correct?
Great, great question, Counsel Orte. And I think I, I don't want to assume what you're referencing, right?
I just want to make, I'm not referencing anything in particular, actually. I just want to make sure that, like, as individual people in the council, like, we make a, we make a decision as the council, and the council says such and such, but we're allowed to disagree, and we're allowed to express that, as long as we're explicitly saying it's our opinion.
That's the way I read that, as well, is it, in 8.3B, it refers to personal opinions, and you need to express that you're, they're your own opinion, and not that of the city or council. And so, it's just, from what I'm reading, it's saying, under the social media portion, that you can't make a, you can't make a statement that's contrary to what it says there, which, yeah.
I just, I want to make sure that I'm, that I understand that to be what that says, and that that is the way that reads, so, thank you.
And I would say, these are your rules, and you are the ones that get to interpret your rules, not me, and so I think making sure that everybody is in agreement. I mean, I think that's the way I read that, but it might be nice to have that affirmation from the rest of your council.
Is that the way the rest of you read that, that that's the understanding?
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Counsel Patty, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I find myself, you know, we've kind of been through the same indoctrination-type trainings when we first got on together, and I find myself often just saying, as an individual counselor, when I respond to inquiries from bodies in my liaison role, and things like that, if they ask for a specific opinion on something. So, I try to just state that, and I feel like maybe that's satisfying this. I don't know. Okay.
I'm thinking about this for a minute. I'm thinking about this for a second. So, if the council makes a decision, for example, up here, and then you're asked later and later, which you disagree with, and then you're asked later for an opinion from whoever, what we're saying is, you can say, as an individual citizen of Stateon, I disagree with the way the council made that decision, without any flack for doing that. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, that's the way that I'm, that's the way that I want it to read, and that's the way that I want this interpreted, so yes. If that is the way that is, then yes.
And I think that it's, it's really you being clear on what, as a counselor, the council made this decision. As an individual, you might have different opinions, but as a council, this is the council decision. So, I think that's what, that's trying to parse out.
That's how I interpret it. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Patty?
I just want to go ahead and, while I say that, I also want to go ahead and express that I don't think I, I can't think of a time where I found myself in a position to, I don't know, speak out of both ends of my mouth and trash a council decision, even if I disagree with it. I feel like when I'm coming away from that, just if we can all kind of agree to this, like, or, I don't like the idea of doing that, because ultimately, we have to respect the decision once it's made, and if we're turning around and doing that, I hate the idea of us sullying a decision that's made by this body through good faith process. And so, I don't know if there's a way we can even tackle this in the rules, but it's just a food for thought here.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Sims?
Yeah, I agree with you, Counsel Patty. I, I think when you make a decision as leaders, you have to have a united front to show that to the rest of the town. I do think that's important. So, if there's a decision, you may not like it, but you do have to agree with it and support it, once the decision's made, so I do think that's important.
Mr. Mayor, we also have the, worthwhile to say, hey, I'd rather not comment on this outside of this meeting, you know? It's a personal opinion, you know? So, I think if we're just all on the same page in here, there's no sense in taking it out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Orte?
I agree with the spirit of that, and like, the sentiment of that, and being respectful of the council as a whole, and making the decisions that we make, that you're not going to agree all the time with all the decisions that are being made. I would hope that, in communication with people, that it can, you can still, if you choose so, express yourself in a manner that is still respectful to the council rules, but you can still respect, respectfully disagree, you know, as a individual person.
Yeah, Counsel Orte, that's where I'm at, I'm same place, same place with that as you are.
Well, and I think, unfortunately, I think that's just going to be a person, it's going to be a, an individual person, you know? We would hope that, you know, sitting up here, that we can all do that, and that's the hope, that we can all respectfully disagree, you know what I mean? Even if we don't agree with the whole council. So, that is the, obviously, the intent and the heart behind this, so. I'd hope future, like, moving forward in the future, that that is something that can be, you know, passed down to future councils as well.
I guess maybe I'd call a question to use of social media, letter E, number 2, page 43, again. This is basically prohibiting you from expressing an opinion in a manner contrary to Chapter 8, number 3, is what we just talked about. So, if anybody on the council is asked for their personal opinion, and they disagree, it's contrary to what the council decided to adopt as a body, is that saying that you can't give your opinion?
I think it's a double negative. I think what this is saying is, this is saying, if you're going to make a comment that's not consistent with the council, that you make sure it's clear.
Correct.
And this is saying, if you, it's a violation of the rules if you don't do that. If you, if you make a social media post that doesn't say this is your personal opinion. That's the way I, I'm reading it. So, I don't, I don't think it's saying you, you can't disagree, it's just saying you have to, it's oddly, it's a double negative.
I guess you're going to be self-regulating, right? So, if this, if this comes to a head, it's going to be the council that determines whether or not this is a violation. Right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, so this is saying, I mean, it basically is just saying, if you don't follow this rule in 8.3B, you're in violation of 8.4E2.
Right. Okay. Those are my comments. What would council like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Orte?
I'd like to make a motion, let me make sure I'm on the right page, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-033 as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 25-033, Updating the Rules of the State and City Council as submitted. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Patty?
I believe I've already expressed sort of my opposition to the meeting time change, and I've already expressed why. I will be a yes vote tonight, just because I think that we should advance our own rules in unison together, but I just wanted to express that. And given what Leonard said, it also kind of sympathetic to that. So, yeah, I just wanted to express that, but I will be a yes.
Okay, anybody else want to discuss the hours?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Orte?
So, that's something we can modify fairly easily, easily, correct, Julia? If, if that doesn't work?
That is correct, and just as a reminder, the intent is that this will start at the beginning of the year. That was based on discussion. And then, yes, we can basically adopt a new resolution, adopting updated council rules at any time.
Okay, so that'd be a pretty, pretty simple procedure if 6:30 is not adequate, or not working. Okay.
Yeah. I would, I would caution that we don't want to do too much of that, where, you know, that, because then that could, people don't know when the meeting's going to start, but I think if we're finding that it's not working, I think we can update that pretty easily.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Alyssa, will you pull the council on this one?
Sure. Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Orte?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Good spirited conversation on that one. That leads us to Public Works Projects and the Detroit Damn Deep Drawdown Updates. Mr. Buchanan, or Julia, or either one, or both, or?
I'll have Barry come up. I think we don't have much of an update on the drawdown at this point, but he'll share that, and then I think he's mostly going to talk to you about what you want to hear from him. So, with that intro, I'll let him go.
Good evening, oh, excuse me, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. Thank you. Barry Buchanan, interim Public Works Director. Very briefly, the only real update that we have as far as the damn drawdown is, oh, excuse me, sorry, damn, damn drawdown is concerned, is that we have, do now have a meeting with the Corps of Engineers on the 3rd of November. So, we've been successful in obtaining that meeting, and I think Counselor Sims and the mayor are attending that meeting, or indicated that they would be available, and there'll be at least three of us from the staff that will be going to that meeting. Any questions about that? I really don't have anything else to update as far as the damn drawdown is concerned. Okay, so is, is Julia?
I'm sorry, it looked like Counselor Patty was starting to...
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to let you know, during council communication, I have some questions about Second Avenue. Just a heads up for later.
Okay. Do you want to say it now, Counselor?
If the mayor doesn't have any objections. Yeah, I received a complaint, actually, while I was up here, and I was super distracted by it, and so sorry. I understand that the vet has some construction going on over on Second Avenue, and it looks like they've blockaded off that street, and the residents don't have access, and so they weren't given any notice of this, and it's causing issues with their trash day, et cetera, et cetera, and I was just wondering what Public Works knows, if anything, about this matter.
I will, I will follow through on that, but as, as it is right now, there is street improvements going on in that street. As it stands right now, the contractor for that work is looking at doing half-street improvements. As of today, we're looking at doing full-street improvement, with the city in actual fact contributing to the other half. As far as the work is concerned, there is actually construction work going on, on the site, as it stands right now. So, I will check into that and find out what the, what the issue as far as blockages is concerned. I had not heard anything about that today.
Thank you, Barry. Sorry to spring that on you.
It's good as God. Okay, so today, as Julia indicated, I really wanted to find out from you guys what you want to hear from us. That is, us being Public Works. As it stands right now, we have a monthly report that goes to you, and I am going to put my hand up and say that we have been remiss in the last three months in actual work doing that, but I believe we're now caught up, correct? Just say yes. Well, I think I owe this month's to finalize that out, but we don't have the data actually collected on that as it stands right now. But that's really the question. I want to know what you guys in actual fact or people would like to see. Are you able to pull it up, the current report for us? Everybody knows where to get this report from? Yeah, okay, cool. So the report as it stands right now is pretty bland, and it really doesn't tell you anything. There are, there's data in it that really is, in my opinion, pretty meaningless. It doesn't in actual fact give you much information at all as far as what Public Works are really doing, or how we're performing, or in actual fact what's happening within the city. I'll illustrate that very quickly by saying, in this report, I've added two pieces of information, which have never been there before. The first one, well, the first two pieces are really about the water production and the water use. We've never previously reported what that actually means. There's a differential between what we produce at the water treatment plant and what we actually meter out and the meter consumed water, or accounted for water. We've never reported the unaccounted-for water. The unaccounted-for water as it stands right now is somewhere between, depending on the month, it varies from 25% through to 40%. Our allowance is 10%. Over 10%, we're in violation from AWWA. At the moment, I don't know why the difference is, but I've only just started looking at this data in detail. So I think it's important that you guys in actual fact see these issues that are in the data, or can be reported from the data itself. So I'm really asking what you got, what you would like to see as far as data is concerned, and how you would like it presented. I am suggesting, I have three different formula, well, this book, whoops, this book here, these 110 pages are what I believe we should be reporting on. It's 110 different metrics that we can in actual fact look at and report on. I don't believe you want to see any more than probably five of them. And from that perspective, I'm saying that there is a way that we can present that in a form that gives you an ability to really look at a piece of paper and say, okay, that's a red, yellow, or green, that's okay, if it's green and yellow. If it's a red, I want to know why. And I'm suggesting that that's the way that I report it to you in the, in the future. In this particular little package here, if you're interested, I'll hand them out, but I'm showing one tabulated form that is very simple. It produces a metrics for, for each of the major asset classes that we have in Public Works. We have another form that takes it a little bit deeper, and it goes into several different categories within each of those classes. And then, as I said, we have a full measurement device that gives you 100 pages worth of data. At the moment, we're not collecting this data in detail, but this will be part of a reporting package coming out of the asset management development work. So I don't really want to labor this any further, but I'd like you guys to in actual fact think about what we're presenting and this sort of data, have a look at it, if, if, you know, not right now, but during the next, over the next month, have a look, let me know what you'd like to see, how you'd like it presented, and we'll work on getting a better presentation and better information for you.
Okay. Is there a date that we can agree on to get that information back to Barry?
My reporting date is the 15th of each month, so if we, you know, let's not make it this month, that's too close for you guys, but let's say the end of this month, going into the first of next month, by the fifth of next month, sort of date would be great for me.
Can you all get that back to him by the first meeting in November, or sooner?
Mr. Mayor?
Esther, go ahead, Councilor Or.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So you want us to go and look at this data and then tell you what we want to, what we want to get out of it?
Yeah, what you'd like to see out of the data, or what you would actually like to see as data and information.
From Public Works.
Yeah, from Public Works perspective, understanding that we have, oh, I keep hitting it, sorry. I can't, we have water, water, water abstraction, water source, water treatment, water distribution, water storage. We then go into wastewater collection, wastewater treatment, wastewater disposal, solid and liquid. We have streets, we have parks, we have facility buildings. I'll hand out a piece of paper, and it gives you that list in here of things that you might want to understand or know about each of those, each of those asset classes. So I'm interested if you think this is sufficient, if you think it's enough detail, or if you want more detail, or in a different form or a different way. So it's really your opinions of what you're wanting to see is what I want to know.
And it might be nothing. I mean, I hope it's not nothing, but it might be nothing. It's really what, what is it, what do you want to know about what's happening in Public Works on a monthly basis to understand for yourself as well as your constituents?
Sure.
So you're just asking what the meat and potatoes of a report would be that you'd like to see?
Yes. I, I mean, my first thought is that we don't really need to get too much into the weeds about what every single one of those things is doing. And we do get updates. So my thought is, like, where are we on projects, street projects that are happening? I mean, we kind of get that in our, we get that in our weekly as well, but street projects that are happening, I mean, I'm, I'm going to look at that, but more of like a, more of a highlight reel, yeah, like a higher level of things that we can talk about and discuss with the community. And then if it's something that it's like, hey, I want to, like, I want to know more about this, then it might be something to dig into.
Understand. I'm going to say this before you actually spend too much time studying what I just handed out. They are formats, they're not details, okay? Do not read them as details that are reported today on our system.
Gotcha.
It is a format of what I'm looking for. So I've given you three formats there. A really simple five-point table, a multi-table, and a colored dot measuring system. That's all I want you to know. And the information is not worth looking at.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Patty?
Right off the bat, just to kind of develop some public awareness and education, I think turbidity would be a good one to start measuring and, I don't know, reporting out potable water treatment or whatever, or potable water source, sorry. That seemed helpful for our current dam drawdown.
Right. In general terms, I'll answer that straight off the top of my head, that our normal turbidity is between one and five. And only when it rains, it spikes up possibly to 20. So, and at that time, we stop producing water and we wait until the flush goes past. It's pretty simple. But yes, we can report, we can report that sort of data. So please give it some thought, let me know what you think, and we'll make our best effort to in actual fact start reporting it the way you want to see it, and the information you want to see.
Counselor Sims?
Yeah, as far as the summary, Barry, I'm, I kind of, I'm an executive summary type of guy. I kind of like the executive summary and, you know, short and to the point, kind of keep it short to a few pages. And then if there's questions, you know, dive into those questions and ask questions on the topic if there's an issue. But that's what I, kind of what I like and what I'm used to.
So you'd prefer it to be in a written format, in a document format, as opposed to a tabular format? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And another thing to think about, and I'm really just thinking about this now as, as I'm listening to this, I think there might be a desire for a monthly project-level detail, maybe very high-level detail of this. I think a lot of these are really more performance measures that might be informative in the budget process, more so than for you to necessarily know every month how many gallons of water we've, you know, produced or whatever. So that's just another thing to think about, is what you might want to know monthly as a counselor versus annually as a, or biannually as a budget committee member.
Right. As I said, don't get hung up on what I've presented specifically. I want to know what you guys really want to see.
My preference is the dashboard, because that way I can easily identify by color, and I can call you out on something that's in the red, say, hey, can you fill us in on more of this? So that's my preference. But I want to review this a little bit more. And so maybe council can look at this, give Barry your format preferences by the end of the month, and we can go from there.
And then elements whenever?
Right, whatever you want to see, meat and potato wise, and then the format. Okay, opportunity for public comment before I dismiss Barry, or further council discussions, since like we already had it. Anything else?
No, I was just going to have Barry stay there while I did my staff.
Looks like I got one more public comment.
Yeah, sorry.
Lynn Hayes stating question. And I see it up there, and I know it's only one piece of everything you're doing. I wondered if I could ask you a quick question in regard to street sweeping. I may?
Yeah.
Okay, it's now fall, okay? And every Tuesday and Wednesday, everybody's got their cans on the curb, and a street sweeper can't get right on the edge as they should. I'll leave it at that, where you can go work on the other problem.
Obviously not.
Okay.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thanks. Anything else, counsel, for Barry? Counselor Carey?
Barry, I appreciate everything you're doing. Appreciate the detailness of this. I prefer to just let the Public Works do their thing. You come up each month with our, or each meeting with an update. But again, I'm with Brian on this. I like the legend, the keynotes with the color codes, because that helps me a lot too, with the progress that's being done.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Or.
Okay, since it was brought up about the street sweeping, is there, like, you can call in, right? Is there a place that the schedule is located?
So my understanding is there's not a formal schedule, because it, it varies a little bit based on the day. But during certain times of the year, he sweeps daily, and other times of the year, it's less routine. And Alyssa's doing a great job of pulling that up as I speak, but I can't see what it says, so you're going to have to tell me what you see.
I know, I don't know how to zoom it either. So January through September, it says the city sweeps the last week of every month west of First Avenue, Monday and Tuesday, east of First Avenue, Thursday and Friday. And then October through December, the city sweeps daily west of First Avenue, Monday, Tuesday, east of First Avenue, Thursday and Friday.
And that can be found on the website?
Yeah, it's, it's on the, under Departments and Public Works, and it's Street Maintenance and Construction on that page. It was there.
And I will ask Barry to check with his crew, because that's what the website says, let's make sure that's actually what's happening. Because I think the Wednesday issue is because of garbage, and I think that that is, you know, they've, they've tried to modify it. But there might be reasons why, if he's been out sick, or, you know, there, there might be reasons why on occasion there is a Wednesday schedule. But we'll have Barry look into that and report back.
That's right.
Okay, thanks, Barry. Appreciate it.
But I did give him the hand signal to stay if, if we're going to move to my...
Communication from city staff, Julia?
So I just wanted to, so I wanted to respond a little bit to the Second Avenue question or issue, because that was brought to my attention today as well. And so could be, through in the capacity of how we're doing community engagement, sharing that information out. So we, we did put some information out on social media today. But I guess I want to say for council and then Barry, that we, we need to work together internally to make sure that we have a really clear standard for communication of street closures, and make sure that we're noticing in advance, so that public aren't caught off guard. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that we're going to do that, and it won't happen overnight, but we'll work on that. And then I also just wanted to mention the slide that you may have, may or may not have heard about on social media. The slide at the community center, as you may know, there is a crack in it. So it wasn't safe. We really couldn't have that slide in, in operation as a slide with a crack. Bob did try diligently to fix that. He found a, a plastic welder that was, he tried to fix and thought it had fixed on a couple of occasions, and it just wasn't holding. The, the slide, from what we could tell, was designed to be able to flip over and be a climbing structure. And so that's what was done. And that's what you're seeing some, some questions about. We currently have some concerns about that. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there, that there are, it's a little bit in limbo, but we're, we're working through that. And just wanted to see if you have any questions of me or Barry about that, since it's been out there on social media. Okay. And then, I think that's all for Barry. You can, and then I also just wanted to acknowledge, I know that there was some questions or concerns, some concerns from several counselors, or, yeah, some counselors, about the Arts Commission Paint Event. So I just wanted to remind everybody that the Arts Commission is a, is a, while it's not a new commission in, on paper, it's a new commission in person. And in trying to get art and get, you know, kind of get them up and going, there was a budget that was established during this last budget cycle. It's about $2,000 a year that would allow them to do programming events, maybe sponsor murals, that kind of thing. And it wasn't really fleshed out in terms of what, what they could do. So I want to open it up and see if there's an interest or a desire to have more discussions about that, having a joint work session potentially with the Arts Commission to discuss what they're wanting to do. The, the paint event was, you know, limited to 20 people. But that, you know, there are times where you have city events in capacity, you know, at limited capacity. So we acknowledge that not a lot of people, it filled up faster than I think we were anticipating. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and see if there is additional discussion that's wanted about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Or.
Thank you, Julia. I would like to have a discussion about it, definitely, so we can kind of get together and make sure that the vision of what the council is wanting from the Art Commission is like in line, so that we're all on the same page, and getting ideas from them as well. I'm not necessarily opposed to having free events, that just was not my vision for what their, what the Arts Commission, like, role and capacity was. And so I just, I would like that.
Okay.
I'd participate in that as well, Julia.
I like the idea of getting together and discussing it myself, too.
On that note, I mean, we haven't done, that I recall, any joint work sessions with other boards and commissions. Is that something that you would be open to, maybe just annually having one where you kind of discuss what, what their hopes are for the year, what your hopes are for the year, and make sure that you understand a little bit more about what, what they're working on and what, what you want them to be working on?
Yeah, I like it.
Okay.
Yes. Well, kind of going back to the thing with the slide, I know that there's a general, it's not the general fund, but there's a general budget for parks and recreation and whatnot. But I don't know what funding there is for, if any, for, you know, the play equipment replacement and what that looks like. And there was like the, the Parks and Rec Board... And there was, like, the, the Parks and Rec Board did like a tree planting day, but we had no idea about it until we saw the pictures. So just making sure that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't want them to plant trees, but just making sure that we're on the same page on like what our boards and commissions are doing is probably important.
That's all I've got for updates.
Okay.
I do have a question, though.
Councilor.
Does the, so, does the Parks and Rec Board have a, have their own budget?
They don't have their own budget per se. It's, there's a Parks budget and so they certainly provide some, some guidance, but they don't direct anything. And that's kind of, you know, the Arts Commission didn't have, they don't have a fund, they don't have a department that, that has a budget, you know, but the, the Parks, there is a Parks budget with which to do things for Parks. So they, but again, they don't, they don't have budgetary authority over that. But they can provide ideas and thoughts and, you know, give some, you know, some prioritization per se, you know, if they, if that is necessary.
Would the Art, does, wouldn't the Arts Commission fall under Parks and Rec?
No, it's a separate body. It's its own body. There's an Arts Commission, the Parks and Rec Board, the Planning Commission, the Budget Committee, the Library Board.
They weren't really established to do recreation either.
Sure. So where does their funding come, their funding comes directly from the general fund?
Yes, it's, it's added of the Community Development Fund. That's where that money was budgeted.
Okay, Julia, I'm not going to let you off the hook yet. I think it's easier for me to, easier to me to refer to you and/or Alyssa to give us an update on the Council vacancy, please.
Do you want to go ahead? I mean, I can, but I know Alyssa's been most involved.
Sure. So we received as of September 30th, seven letters or indications of interest, I guess. Not all of them were letters. We, so we received seven of those. One was not someone who resided within city limits. Another one actually withdrew today. I think I emailed everybody about that. So we have five remaining and they've all been invited to the October 20th Council Work Session that evening. Will just be a work session meeting. We've got several topics to talk about. We'll be doing, I think we'll probably do the Council vacancy. It's not really an interview, but they'll have a chance to speak to the Council and share why they would like to be appointed and that'll be at the beginning of the meeting that night.
Mr. Mayor.
Alyssa, will we have the topics, the questions emailed to us beforehand? Are we going to be discussing?
I don't even, there won't really even be questions.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so each person will just, it'll be kind of like public comment and we'll time them. Everybody gets three minutes to talk about what they feel is important, why they want to serve with you. Yeah.
And Mayor, I think this, I'm glad that you brought it up. To a certain extent, that's the way we've, that's the way it's been done and so that's the way we're doing it, but we would take direction from, from you on how you want to, if you wanted us to prompt them with questions, we could certainly do that. And then afterwards, there, ultimately, it's going to be your decision to recommend, you know, to basically appoint somebody and then at the following council meeting, I assume you would be appointing them and then Council would be approving that appointment. So that's, that's sort of the way it works, is that you, you will make the decision, but I think what you've said is that you want to make the decision with input from the Council.
Yeah, I did say that and I still hold to that. I guess I would ask Council, though, how they would like to participate or what do you envision the discussion being the next work session? Just an advocacy for their individual or should we ask them a couple of questions?
Mr. Mayor.
I like the idea of asking a couple of questions, you know, related to the city.
Okay. What do you think, Councilor Or?
I think being on the Council is a big time commitment and I want to ensure that the people who are wanting to be in this position really understand that. So I'd like to hear from them that they recognize that.
Okay. So I like what you all are saying. What do we do this? How about each Council, each Counselor send me two questions that they would like to see? And send it to Alyssa, actually. And copy me on it if you would. And then we will pull from those and maybe we'll have two questions per candidate, that we won't be there too long and they can still introduce themselves, advocate, and then we can ask them two questions. How about that? Does that work?
You can send it to Alyssa and just, she can put it all together.
So just to, I guess, point of clarification, are you going to ask the same question of each candidate?
I think we have to.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was hoping you'd say.
No, I think that's HR. I know all about it.
Mr. Mayor.
So two, two questions for each, from each of you to send to Alyssa and then we'll put it together. I think we're going to, how long is that work session? It's going to be a couple hours, right?
Yes.
We'll be, we'll have time. Mr. Mayor.
Will we have time in the Council and you to discuss afterwards?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we give them like five minutes instead of three?
Sure, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the three minutes is just kind of a easy one, but yeah, no, we can totally.
I think especially if we have, like, some specific questions and then we want to hear from them on what they want to talk about, too.
Yeah. And would you be okay with us giving the questions to them in advance so they can be prepared?
Yeah, I don't, I want, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
That would also expedite the process.
Yeah.
I'm rather thoughtful questions than being caught off guard or something.
Right.
Or thoughtful answers, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we'll have five folks that are going to be in the process. All right, what else does Council have for communication? Anything? Mr. Mayor. Councilor Sims.
I had a question about the stop signs on the S corner on Jefferson, between Jefferson and East Saniam. Or did we ever make a decision on that, on, on the parking, on the parking?
Yeah.
Because family, it's family building blocks is going in right there and they're going full steam right now, so.
So I'm going to make Barry come up again. So you're referring to the no parking signs, not the stop signs, correct?
Right, the no parking.
Yeah, and so, and remember there were sort of two issues. There was no parking along that road from First basically to 10th, which would be consistent with the Transportation System Plan, but potentially make people angry. And whether or not there was an appetite to explore that further. And then there is the issue of the no parking signs within the S curves themselves, that it seems like there's a sign missing. And I know Barry had tried to reach out to the county about that. I don't know what the status is. He hasn't, we haven't heard back, so we will follow up again with them.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking in the S, S curves itself on, what is that, 10th?
Yeah.
Between, you know, Jefferson and East Saniam is what I was thinking. Because that's going to, I think that's going to be an issue. They're going to, that place is going to be really busy, so. And then the other thing I had, the Planning Board, they approved the concept plan for Phillips Estates. So that moved forward. Now it's, now it's gone to getting the master plan approved here in the future. So it was 24, 24 units. So that, that moved forward at that last planning session we just had, what was it, last, last week? So that has moved forward, that's a positive step. The League of Oregon Cities Conference, Julie and I went to that. That was a good time, interesting, lots of opinions. And, yeah, it was always good to get and talk, get, sit down and talk with the other counselors and mayors from all the other cities. So that was, that was pretty nice and, and it was, it was a good time. It was nice to, we went out to dinner with the Sublimity contingent, so that was, that was good. But it was, yeah, appreciated that, enjoyed it, it was a good time, highly recommended. And the last plug I had was for code enforcement. Appreciate Kendra getting out and working on the code enforcement and we just have to have high standards and high standards are really important. We got to maintain those, so we, our city looks good. That's my plug for code enforcement. Just keep, keep the pressure up and high standards.
And you will have an opportunity to share that more with her because code enforcement is one of the topics on our next meeting, I believe, unless, yeah. We've got some work session stuff in November, too, but yeah, code enforcement is one of the topics that we have to share kind of where, where we're at and what we believe the current priorities are and get confirmation from Council on that. And so that will be an opportunity for you to give, give some policy level direction for code enforcement.
Mr. Mayor. Councilor Carey.
Mr., Councilor Sims alluded to the no parking, one of them I wanted to talk about. Also the speed limit, decreasing that again in front of, front ridge, I just want to keep that out in front. And a shout out also to all the new lighting system. Our neighborhood is great with these new lights, very bright. So I, I like it a lot, so thank you for that. That's all I got.
And Councilor Carey, thank you for saying that. And just as a reminder, as I recall, when that was first coming out, we, it was bright. If, if it is really too bright and bothersome, I think that they do, they do plan on making tweaks and modifications, so don't just sit there annoyed. And this is really more for the general public or for you to share with people. Don't just sit there annoyed, you know, share that information with, I think Pacific Power is who, who you would share that information with so that they can make modifications.
Councilor Patty.
Thank you. I think this is more a request for an update if you have one. Julia, I think I saw email traffic months ago inquiring about the lit star on top of the water tower adjacent to the cemetery. I was just wondering, do we have an update on that and whether or not that's fixed or what's going on with that?
So the mayor actually asked me about that recently and I pulled up an email from about a year ago, so it must be something that is sort of thought about as we enter into the holidays every year.
Same people are asking him.
So, what's that?
Oh, the same people must be asking him.
So at that time, so, and it was over a year ago because Lance was the one that responded to that. What it would take is essentially rewiring, there'd need to be some welding of a safety piece onto the ladder. And we don't even have a cost estimate for that. I can certainly look into what the cost estimate would be, but it's probably not going to be just, you know, change. And so I think at that time, it was like, well, forget it. So, you know, we can do that, but that's probably not going to be our highest priority of things to look into, but, you know, we can see if we can get cost estimates of what that would take and get back to you at, at some point.
Yeah, I just think if it's not cost prohibitive, why not, right? But if it is cost prohibitive, okay, we know, right?
Councilor Or, did you have anything? I thought you saw.
Uh, no, oh, good.
You're good? That leaves communication for me and I just want to say thanks for the process, Alyssa for helping through the letters of interest for the mayor position, sorry, for the counselor position.
Hopefully that's not a Freudian slip.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's all I got for tonight. With that, we're adjourned.